We got a dead mic, by the way.
We dropped the same car. Yes, you want me to give one to each car?
Drop them in. Alright, uh, when I open the planning board meeting of, uh, June twenty first, two thousand and sixteen, okay, you need a motion?
Motion. Speaker.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, vote as unanimous, then the meeting is open at seven forty seven.
What do you got?
Yep, uh, lot line change, we already, it was already approved. Basically, straightened out the lot lines and we added Mr. Latham's, um...
Oh yeah, you guys got that all squared away?
Right away.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go with protocol first, okay? First on the agenda is Eric Hell, Six Fairway Drive, he showed up and left. And that's, that's all I'm gonna say about it. Next on the agenda is nine twenty nine Salem Street, Groveland Auto. And no one's present for that. Okay, next on the agenda is one ninety four Main Street, Gary Caruso. He also is not present.
I did hear from, uh, Crabcheck, I hooked Crabcheck up with Caruso. Cause Caruso needs a lot of fill and Crabcheck's got a lot of fill clean from some holes in roadway. So, he's gonna bring it right to this place when he gets it okay.
Who's Caruso?
Caruso's across the street from the Groveland Police Station. It's something we, we had given a, uh, per- permit to, uh, on the Board of Appeals many years ago. And he never did anything, it's back in the nineties, yeah. And, um, real problem there is it's, you know, drops right off the cliff.
Used to be a gas station back in the sixties.
So, I mean, it's, but what we would be doing is site plan review on that first and then we go...
Didn't we see a couple plans with that?
Yeah, well...
He came in a couple times and now I sent him the site plan review and he, uh, is still working with a, a new engineer, so...
Okay, alright, next up?
Okay, next up is Main, uh, one fifty seven Main Street, Jim Billis. Okay, um, he also is not present.
That's right next to the cemetery.
What's that?
It's gonna be a subdivision, but he changed engineers too. He was supposed to contact me last Tuesday if he wanted to come in tonight and he didn't, so...
Subdivision next to the cemetery? On Main Street?
I don't know how many houses we ever seen.
On Main Street? Main Street?
What?
On Main Street.
His house is on Main Street, he owns all that land on the other side of the cemetery next to it. Goes all the way to the river almost.
Oh, okay. Hi.
Uh, Mike, Mark Knight, Southern Street, um, is Mark Knight here?
He's the only one here.
Mr. Latham. Okay.
What's your name, man?
Ken.
Ken.
Yeah.
You guys still have the garage on Washington?
Yeah, I used to work there.
Yeah, okay.
When I was seven years old, I started pumping gas there.
I don't see any gas.
Flying A.
Flying A.
Like the Fonz.
Flying A is good. Back on those stairs, okay.
Back in the day.
Which...
So, we get a lot line adjustment, so...
Yes.
So, uh, back me up, it looks good, but just...
Can I stand up or...
Yeah, come on up.
Sure, okay.
I know we talked about the easement and the accessibility and could you drive it and all, I got all that, so what did you end up doing?
Okay, so we landed up kinda shifting everything over, uh...
So, you just lit it?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so that was easy.
Yeah.
Meets all the setbacks now, you're happy? You're happy?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Mylar?
Yeah, Mylar's...
Okay, Mylar's over there, okay, let's see the notes. See, we knew this could be worked out pretty easy. It looked it, you had plenty of...
I don't know if it was easy.
There, we got it.
It was a main thing, you know? Yeah, well, you had, you had the space, that, that was the thing.
Sometimes you don't have the space and you really get in a position and, and, uh, you know, parties wanna work out, it, it works, it works out well, so...
Yeah, it better work things out.
Yeah, and it's, it all complies, so now there's, you know, you have your full access, your house is outside the setback and...
Yeah.
And all that, um, so that was easy. And then, um, yeah, so that's all you did was slide the lot line.
Yeah.
So, this was the previous A and R and then we just slid the line over and that's it, okay?
Yeah.
So, motion to endorse plan for Merrimack Engineering dated June twenty.
I'll go then.
Uh, well, I'll make the motion in a second.
Okay.
Are you making the motion?
I was making the motion. I don't get to do those much anymore, so... Can I throw that out there?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote unanimous.
Okay, so, we signed this, I want a copy.
Do you have a, um, do you guys have a form?
What?
For me?
Check the box.
Here they are, okay. Quickly, do we have the machine, printing machine going, good job.
Lots of them. They come up more than a half.
No, I mean, do we have a, access to a print machine?
Uh, not that I know of.
Not right now, no.
Okay, so, you want him to make three copies after the stamp? Tomorrow, he's gonna bring the clerk in.
Sure.
Okay, so, you will take this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go into the Board of Health and turn their printer on.
The Board of Health's got a printer. You guys got printers, start filling this one in, the pen right there.
Yep.
Okay, you can go and pause it if you want for the, uh, for the paper shopping.
Should be this key here.
This key?
Any like candy bars now, which is still for me?
I think the, uh, auto place, what's the guy's name, Fur?
Oh, you mean the guy, the engineer?
No, the owner, the, uh...
Okay, yeah, um...
Fur, Furty or something like that?
Body.
Body. He's a fireman, he knows Briscoe, I was talking to Briscoe.
Pull that again, Briscoe.
I don't think they're...
It's on energy, Sam. It's the twenty first?
He was feeling out everything, I don't think they're ready to come in yet.
Well, there's, there was...
He was asking for everything, but then he's gonna fine tune it for that gas station garage and everything.
Yeah. Well, I think the, the one was the gas station and the, the other was the paint booth. If he's gonna keep, you know, that business as well, but...
I don't think he's gonna be doing that.
No.
It's gonna be a lot of restrictions.
Yeah.
He didn't even know about the summer.
Yeah.
You go, gents.
You're making copies or...
Uh, yes, he's, it's on, he's gotta fill that out first.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'll play runner. Okay, we only need one. I take it you got a bunch of these, Mr. Latham?
Yeah.
Here. We only, we're gonna get the recorded ones, you might as well. Have a couple spare, just cause they go nowhere. He's got a bunch of them. Too good?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, the recorded copy you'll get.
Where's the others? That we can sign.
That's all we need.
Here, here, here.
Yep.
Yeah, throw that other pen back, that, you can't use that one. Okay.
Yep.
Yes, today's twenty first. Okay. I'm gonna give you three copies of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
When this is recorded.
Fifty dollars for the lot line adjustment?
Yeah.
Fifty dollars to Town of Groveland. Okay, you're gonna take three copies of these, gonna get them all three stamped by the clerk.
Yeah.
Okay, you're gonna take one of them and throw it into our box.
Okay.
That's one, you get one. You take that one copy with this Mylar.
Yep.
For the registry unit.
Registry, yeah.
Record it. Six certified copies, not one copy certified, copy six times, right? Six certified copies.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, and then just bring them and throw them in our box.
Okay.
And ask Merrimack to do a disc.
Well, the best thing to do is leave them with the town clerk, cause that box ain't gonna hold them.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, do that or we'll put my...
Yeah.
But, um, and ask Merrimack to do the disc.
The disc?
Yeah, he's gotta do the disc.
Yeah, you want, and you want a copy of that disc because you ever wanna...
Okay.
You ever wanna do anything in the future, you know? You need that, you need that disc.
Make sure everything's shut off when they come out, yeah.
That's a good thing they're doing now, because we ran into one individual that...
Right.
Has the disc, but the firm that produced it went out of business. But, by taking that disc to his new engineer...
Yeah.
They can use that disc to bring everything up, make what changes they need to make.
Yeah.
It, it saves them a lot of money at that point.
He probably does have, I'm sure he does have a disc.
Okay.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. It's painless.
Once again.
Some people don't think it is, but it is painless.
Yeah, reminiscence.
Yeah, exactly.
You wanna clip?
Ford failing five hundred, remember?
Yeah.
I actually had one of those, my father had all kinds, he used to go to the auctions and buy the, you know, fifty eight Ford, Dick, remember Dick Tremblay? He had a fifty five Olds convertible.
Don't remember that name, no.
And, uh, remember the Decoys, he had a fifty...
Yeah, Decoy.
He had a fifty eight Ford convertible with the Continental kit, turquoise color. Well, he used to get some awesome cars.
Yeah.
You know, you look at them now, back then they weren't worth much, but...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Now, if you had them, thirty, forty grand apiece.
I had a fifty eight Chevy convertible tri-power, three deuces. I used to go to North Carolina and back, I'd be doing a hundred and twenty on the Jersey. I got my ticket down in North Carolina, you know, around there. When I, when I got to New Jersey, the guy's looking at it shaking his head. Cause it puts the time you get on and go off.
Okay, so, yeah. Alright, so, the clerk's gonna, she'll take a timestamp it.
Yeah. Coming to see it tomorrow.
So, we're done.
Yeah.
So, then you just, you just three copies, she goes bang, 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 all three stamps.
Okay.
One to the registry, one to us, one to her.
Yeah.
Okay.
Registry, you and her, you got it.
Yeah.
Alright, well, thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, and you gotta go see her first. You gotta see her before the registry.
Yeah, okay.
Cause they're gonna be looking for that. Yeah, yeah, that's protocol.
Thanks a lot, guys.
So long, you bet.
Okay, okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, seven, Groveland Electric Site Plan.
Yeah, he was supposed to come in.
Mike?
This is, this is, um, unprecedented.
So, what's, uh, what are they doing?
They're renovating the whole building and everything, they get a line from, uh...
Which, which building? They have two.
The new one, Watson's that they want.
Oh, Watson's, they bought, okay, I saw the water line going across the road.
Right, they were working on that, but, uh, they're supposed to have a site plan review to show all the other work they wanna do there.
So, what are they doing, what are they gonna do to that building for, just trucks?
What are they gonna do with the old one?
No, that, that building is a, an erected steel structure that had multiple businesses in it, so they're taking it over for a garage?
I haven't seen the plan, they haven't brought it to us yet.
Okay, so they're just, alright, so we don't know what they're doing there?
No, we don't know anything yet.
Okay.
He called me a week or so ago and he put them on.
Okay. Alright, what else we got?
Well, that's it, I mean, the only thing is it's eight o'clock, I mean, some people might think they can come in at eight o'clock. So, I mean, I don't wanna shut the whole thing down at this point. If you want, we'll just, um, go on pause again, you know, and just...
You pause the meeting?
I think the electric people are gonna move into that new building.
Yes.
Cause they're all fighting over the old building.
Yeah, well, the old building, yeah, I just wonder, cause there's not much in there. So, that's what I meant, is it gonna be for trucks and utility equipment and...
No, I think it's gonna be the offices and everything.
Yeah, so where the truck's gonna park? Line trucks, okay. Okay. Makes sense, the lines are right there.
I just hope they have enough room there so I can go in and videotape their meetings.
Uh...
Hey, it's open meeting, they just keep throwing me out, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, what we gotta decide is, uh, if, if we're meeting in July or just once, the third Tuesday, or if we're gonna skip the first.
I mean, the problem is we're backing up on some of these things not coming in and, and...
We've always had, you know, just, just sign offs, July, August and stuff, cause no one will attend the hearings.
Yeah, I, I know, because, I mean, what if all, all of these, you know, come in at once, boom, you know, in July, or, you know, we, we only have one, one meeting in each month.
Billis definitely is gonna be in July, I told him, I'd get back to him.
Is it for meetings or is it for hearings?
If we're skipping the first Tuesday or not.
We have traditionally not put any hearings on the docket for July and August, cause no, we couldn't get anybody to attend. You know, the residents who are busy on vacation.
I thought it was in August that you took off.
Yeah, well, that's vacation.
What month do you go to the lakes there?
It depends on the schedule. It'll probably be the end of July, first week of August, but, um, dun dun. We still running?
Well, yeah, we're still on it, but why don't we just try to set some dates, I mean, that's, um... And then we'll go back if, in case, um, Groveland Electric comes in. So, we wanna set dates for, for July at least.
Plus, we're just trying to set a date, so what do you wanna do for July?
Well, at this point, like I'm saying, we're backing up on some of these things, I, I think we probably oughta go first and third.
Well, wait a minute, it's, we, we have the meetings, we're doing on that, um...
The first, uh, Tuesday in July is the fifth, the day after the fourth.
Yeah, and we're, we're going over, you know, vacation schedules, et cetera, so...
And the third is the nineteenth of July.
Is everybody alright with that, I mean, Bobby, just so you know, I mean, Groveland Auto hasn't come in yet, Gary Caruso across the street hasn't come in.
And Billis, it's...
And we know Billis has got something, so, I mean, uh, these things have been running, uh...
Yeah, but if they're not gonna come in, right?
Both of those changed engineers.
That's what I said, one, one for July, one for August and, um...
Well, then let's, let's do, let's get off the...
So, nineteen?
They went through the nineteenth, the third Tuesday in July.
That's the nineteenth.
How about that one, Jim?
That's fine, I mean, I, I don't care whether it's the first, the second, the third, I mean, I don't want it to be the fourth, I think you get a lot...
Well, that'll give the engineers that they got to get it done.
Okay, so we're gonna go the nineteenth in July.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, um, can we set the dates for August?
Then August, the first Tuesday is the second.
So, so are we doing one in Ju- August as well?
Yeah, cause, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna be here.
So, see, that's August twenty third.
That would be the sixteenth.
What is, what is, no...
August twenty three.
I won't be here, what, what is the second Tuesday in August?
That's the ninth.
Ninth.
I can be here. Is that alright?
I'm not sure if I will be, so...
Eight, what, what is it again?
There's two, nine, sixteen, twenty three and thirty.
I can do the ninth, I can do the second if you want.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Which one do you want?
Twenty third.
Well, I won't be here.
Okay. Well, set the meeting and we'll see what happens.
Why not the, what's wrong with the ninth? No one else, except you.
Fine with me.
You alright on the ninth? I'll be here on the ninth. You won't be here on the...
You wanna do two in August and one in July?
No, we're gonna do one in August and one in July, we're just trying to figure out what Tuesday.
Because no one's coming in.
Well, it, you, you know, when I used to set up the, these things here, you'd have to call them because things, they'd have delays. Or you'd set it up there, if you don't call me and confirm the morning of, then, then you lose the slot, and we just move people up. And they just assign everybody ten or fifteen minute slot time so they don't slide when you get a busy agenda.
What day, July, did we decide?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay.
Yep. And what are we deciding for August, eight, nine, is that alright?
No, I'm not, I'm not here, no, so, uh, twenty three I'm here, thirty I'm here. But you guys can set the meeting, I mean, if...
Well, I won't be here, the two of you will be here. So, I mean, you run into, um...
Alright, so pick one and we'll run with it.
Labor of the board.
Well, we're meeting the third week in, uh, July, so it'd be kinda soon for the ninth, wouldn't it?
Can you do sixteen?
Jim, are you okay with the sixteenth of August?
No, it can't be.
Oh, twenty third or thirtieth?
No.
Alright, you'll be gone all those three. Well, why don't you just vote me to sign, I'm not going anywhere, any sign offs, and then do it in, uh, September.
Okay, so you're gonna meet on what, August what?
No, he's saying we're not gonna meet August, right?
Right, you won't meet, but you're, you'll vote tonight to let me sign off on, uh, trivia things.
Building permits, yeah.
And we can post that in the, and so I'll tell them.
You wanna revisit that in July, since we're, see what, how these guys are doing, maybe there's nobody.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, so make sure by the last meeting in July, which will be the nineteenth, that we, that we revisit that.
Alright, yeah.
So, okay. Got it?
Yeah, we can always do that, meet August on the twenty third or something. But if they're not, they're always canceling, so...
Yeah, that's, they're having problems with their engineers.
Okay, so why, why don't we just make a motion to allow Bob to do sign offs in both July and August if needed?
Yeah, good.
Okay, so I'll make that motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, uh, the other thing is, I mean, we're gonna have to meet with, um, the zoning board on this bylaw, s- you know, pretty soon. I mean, I s- I think I s- I sent everybody an updated list of the uses.
Yep.
Where we've, uh, been working with, um, the building inspector as well.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, pretty much, it, it allows a lot more by rights, but again, it, it's pretty well oriented to, uh, retail. Yes, some, um, some industrial, not a lot, you know, but that's, that's more of a problem, I think the Board of Appeals should be hearing. I think everybody would agree with that, but, uh, the other thing is, is that, you know, going back, both Bobrowski's firm and, um... Town Council had said not to change this bylaws, you know, to any great extent. I mean, there's clara- a lot of clarification language in the bylaw, okay? It just, it's basically the same thing as we were, had in the old bylaw, but it's written the way the courts want it written. So, you know, i.e. there are changes, but they're not substantive changes. It's just language change, it's the same meaning. The, the other problem is, is that, you know, the, the meetings that we did have with Copelman, you know, with that, you know, with the Board of Selectmen, uh... Wanted us to, well, Bill Dunn did, he showed up for the Board of Selectmen, he wanted us to, you know, update the... Uh, two sections of the bylaw that the zoning board has been having a problem with, and that was the, uh, in-law apartment and the, um... What was the other one that they had? Oh, God. Which we did, but, you know, you, you could have people taking shots at those as well. This was the, um, the, uh, business in, in, in your home and everything.
So, we getting a meeting when, do you know when?
If you, if you make too many changes going into this, and I don't know what, evidently the zoning board had a meeting of things they wanted, they wanna do. But, I'm going back to what Copelman said, I'm going back to what Bobrowski said, and that was not to change it substantially. Substantial changes would be done afterwards, one by one, by one, by one.
Okay, so when's the meeting?
Well, this is the whole thing, I mean, I, I'm gonna have to get that out of Denise.
Okay.
Evident, and she got put in charge of it, you know, by, uh, Bill Dunn. And I don't know whether the, some of the Board of Selectmen are gonna show up or not, you know, we've been holding meetings on the darn thing. We invite people and they don't show up. So, if they want us to go to the, uh, I believe it's the September, um, all-town meeting, I guess, you know, then we're gonna have to have it prepared.
October.
October, October meeting, so, you know, it's, there's still be a lot of work to do, and I mean, if this thing drags and drags and drags...
That's October, town meeting?
Maybe like a special, if they have a special, but otherwise it'll be April.
That's tight.
Yeah.
It's gonna be April. It's gonna be April, cause there, there's not enough time to get changes in, reviewed hearings, input. You have the summer coming up.
And something that big, I mean, we, we always wanted to do things like that at the annual town meeting, not, not at specials, you know? So...
This wasn't our, our idea was...
I, I know, this is, this is the whole thing, I mean, we keep saying, you know, what the lawyers have told us. Because all you gotta do is you get a small crowd shows up, if, if it's more than thirty-three percent...
Yeah.
You're dead, and you're dead for two years.
Yeah, so...
You know, I mean, I'd like to get this thing done, have a new one, at least we got a, a better structured bylaw at that point, and then just simply go forward, okay? Whether the building inspector wants to go forward with some of his definitions first, or the zoning board wants to go forward with some of the things they wanna do, I don't care.
Okay, so...
And then we'll, we'll follow on, we have some things we wanna do too, but...
Well, we beat that up enough, so, so, so just get back to Denise then and...
Yep.
Find out with the meeting and...
And at that point, I mean, I'll just have to get in contact with you, at this point, I mean, we're, we're headed for July, it looks like, you know?
Okay.
You know, I, I don't know what else to say.
That'll work.
But people are gonna have, if they, if they say they're gonna come to a meeting, they've got to come to the meeting, that's all there is to it. We can't send emails out and say there's gonna be a meeting and nobody shows up from these other boards. I mean, that, that's where it gets kind of unfair. That's where, you know, it, it just, it just leaves this thing wide open for challenges. Because no, we're not all gonna be on the same page.
Well...
As, as well as the audience at that point.
Alright, what else we got?
Well, we, um, we got nothing else.
Right?
Motion adjourned.
Unless Mr. Noel wants to show back up.
Did you look at the pictures I sent you of Crabchecks?
Yeah, nice work, yeah. Yeah, I was out there, actually, I saw it.
Yeah, and you were working across the street.
Yeah.
When I was, he was compact in the trench when he tied in.
Yeah. Actually, I was just looking across the street, but yeah, we were there.
Oh, your truck was there, yeah.
And, uh... We just went to...
Yeah, come along nice.
Yep, so...
Yeah, look good, yeah.
Motion adjourned.
The wa- water line was tested by Prescott today and chloro- chloroform, all done, it passed.
Good.
So, when are they paving that?
He, he just told me a couple hours ago, he hired a, a paver, I didn't write his name down, I'll meet with him.
This is, that's the weirdest thing, that, a subdivision up, house is going up, we don't, we got dark.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we gotta make sure that never happens again.
He's gotta get his engineer back out there, because when they were looking for the, uh, pressure test leaks for two days, they disrupted the grade state, so... He's coming back out and putting the subbase and the gravel and the hot top markings and stations back up.
It was just...
We'll get the, uh...
It was supposed to be done.
T-base trucked in and everything.
Ten months ago, so, alright, okay, we got a motion to adjourn on the floor.
Yeah.
Second, yeah.
At eight eighteen, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
You adjourned, thanks for watching, click, we're out.